All right, let's call this meeting to order. Today is January 21st, 2025. Carrie, could you do the roll, please?
Alder Person Carpenter.
Here.
Esther Khan.
Here.
Gantz.
Here.
Hansen.
Here.
Kunderger.
Here.
Ledvinah.
Here.
P Rock.
Here.
Quigley.
Here.
And Mayor Boyd is excused.
Item number two, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the minutes of the December 17th, 2024, common council meeting.
Make a motion approved.
I'll second.
Right, motion by Alder Person Carpenter, seconded by Alder Person Gantz. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, public comment upon matters not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything? Nobody's here. Number five, recommendation from plan commission for a four lot extraterritorial certified survey map at 1201 Wrightstown Road in Rockland, parcel R-279.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alder Person Hansen, seconded by Alder Person Gantz. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six, recommendation from the Board of Park Commissioners on approval of a Merilux as the main beer garden sponsor for 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alder Person Gantz, seconded by Alder Person Kunderger. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven, recommendation from Board of Public Works on award of contract 24-17 Community Center Relay to Elson Excavating LLC in the amount of $662,927.50.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Carpenter, seconded by Alder Person Hansen. Any discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote, please.
Alder Person Carpenter.
Aye.
Esther Khan.
Aye.
Gantz.
Aye.
Hansen.
Aye.
Kunderger.
Aye.
Ledvinah.
Aye.
P Rock.
Aye.
Quigley.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, recommendation from the Board of Public Works on award of contract for Ninth Street Reservoir Overflow modifications to Jocert Brothers, Inc. in the amount of $68,500.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Good. Motion by Alder Person Carpenter, seconded by Alder Person.
Quigley.
Quigley. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Alder Person Esther Khan.
Aye.
Gantz.
Aye.
Hansen.
Aye.
Kunderger.
Aye.
Ledvinah.
Aye.
P Rock.
Aye.
Quigley.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nine, recommendation from the Board of Public Works on GV15 retaining wall design concepts.
Make a motion to approve the board's recommendation.
I'll second.
Right, motion by Alder Person Hansen, seconded by Alder Person Gantz. Is there any discussion, Alder Person Hansen?
Yeah, can we have the Public Works Director go over what the recommendation was at the board? For those who weren't on the board or, and for the public?
Absolutely. So, what I got on the screen is the PowerPoint I presented to the Board of Public Works last week regarding the retaining wall that's going to be built as part of the GV section. As you can see here, the Salt Bridge project, you know, is GV 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. GV15 is what we're talking about right now. That actually, the limits of that is actually from Lawrence Drive to La La Dolphin Road. As part of the project, there's going to be 2,000 linear feet of wall that has to be built to basically accommodate the railroad tracks that exist today. On your screen, I got actually showing the retaining wall, basically looking from the west. If you're out on Red Maple Road right now, the existing Red Maple Road goes underneath the railroad tracks. So, right now, the preferred alternative that actually the county is working on with the railroad is actually to put the road underneath it, build a new railroad bridge. As a result, there'll be retaining wall on the north side from roughly Redtail Glen going to the west, 1,000 feet, and the same thing on the south. This is actually the concept of looking at the wall going to the east. So, you kind of get the visual effect. You have a four-lane highway, two lanes each way. The walls on each side of the road, basically, it'll be the sidewalk, a 10-foot sidewalk on the north side of the road, which is basically on the left of the screen as you look at it. So, as part of the retaining wall, you know, the aesthetics, we've got to kind of determine the type of wall and the aesthetics to go with it. So, what we presented to the board is we have what we call an MSC panel wall. Basically, it's panels, kind of what a stamped brick look. And then, basically, the wall cost for this is $90 to $120 a square foot. This would actually be stain applied to the panels, as you see in this photo here. The actual, the second wall being considered is a cast and placed concrete cantilever wall. It's kind of similar to what you'll see on the I-41 corridor right now from Sharon Road going to the north. It's kind of a stamped wall. It's actually got the brick look to it and stain. And then, the wall on the right side is what's done at Wrightstown, similar type of a retaining wall. It's kind of a, kind of more of a rock-type stamp look. This is similar to the cost of the first wall, the MSC wall, at $90 to $120 a square foot. The third wall being considered by the county is basically a cast and placed type wall. Soldier piles or piles are driven, then there's panels that are slid into it. This type of wall actually costs almost double up to $220 plus a square foot. Basically, the panels that are slid into it, it's kind of a stamped form liner look with staining applied. What actually the board recommended was going with the wall similar to the MSC panel type of a wall, you know, looking for a stamped look like this or the form liner and colored, but pretty much it'll be a cast and placed concrete cantilever wall. These actually, the cost of, you know, GV15 and the sharing of what the county is 50/50 split. Right now, the county is kind of discussing with their board and, you know, wanting to hear what the peer wanted to go with as far as before they make a final recommendation to their actual consultant. The other thing that had to be considered as part of the wall project is there's two types of railing to go on it. On your top screen is kind of a decorative type railing, and on the bottom is actually a vinyl coated chain link fence. The actual railing on top is $200 to $300 on your foot, and then the vinyl fencing on the bottom is $40 to $75 on your foot. The board actually recommended going with the top with the decorative railing, as you see on the top of the screen. So, that's kind of the presentation I gave the board on Monday. There's any questions, you know, on it?
Alder Person Hansen.
Scott, can you go back to the first and second retaining wall options? Yeah, so I spoke in favor of that kind of tan colored. I think the red look should be, should stick just to I-41. That has its own kind of unique look, so I think this should be a separate look. But you were saying the county would probably prefer, we can use this look, but the county would prefer the second option in terms of the material, right?
Correct. And then, when I did find out.
So, it would look like Wrightstown's.
Correct. When I did find out from the county, since the Board of Public Works, actually, the staining of the walls, as you see on 41 on the left side of the picture, that's actually more costly when it comes because of different colors, where the one similar to Wrightstown actually is, it's more of a earth tone, cheaper cost.
Alder Person Quigley.
Yeah. Scott, there was the, the option after this, the pile and post, it's much more expensive. Is there a structural difference in terms of, you know, the function of the retaining wall, of holding, holding back the material?
So, correct. The function of the wall is really to hold back the earth behind it. The structural design on this particular type of wall, they drive piles down into the ground.
Right.
And then, basically, slide the panels in it. So, the strength of that type of a wall is actually with the piling's being slid, the panels going in, you know, are reinforced concrete and meant in designs to retain the type of soils that's behind it. Now, the other type of that's cast in place, which is this wall here, it mean, it's basically set up, they got, you know.
Foundations and it's designed structurally, depending on the type of soil, the hull power of the wall is, you know, how much reinforcement and how much footing and that sort of thing that the retaining wall.
This is cost right here, it's cheaper versus driving the piling down so many feet and holding back that, putting the panels.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Person Kunderger.
I'm just curious, on both ends, with the walls as well as the fencing, it seems like we're given, for lack of better phrasing, like a Cadillac and an Escort kind of range here with nothing in between, and it also feels a little like not being an engineer at all, but wouldn't maybe some places require that by closer water or where flooding is more prone, and other places, maybe it's not as necessary? Is it a one-and-done kind of deal? I, I don't, I don't know. Like, our price points, it seems like one is much more structurally sound and one is less, but wouldn't there be places that maybe one would merit for investment in the longevity of the project?
It's a good question. Um, so, whether it's a rail on top or the fence, the primary purpose of that is, you got to imagine, you know, your yard or.
Yards that are there. They slope it back into.
If somebody were to walk up there, it's kind of a, like somewhat of fall restraint. They don't want people to get to the edge and fall off. So, that holds people back from, you know, falling off. Now, what you see here, for example, on the corridor 41, this is at Mason Street, I believe, difference, it's still a more of a metal-type fence railing versus the chain link fence. There are different styles to that approach. I mean, the county presented, like I said right here, this is kind of, it's one of the aesthetics that to be considered for the wall. Could there be other options for that type of railing? Yes. You know, like I said, the fencing is a cheaper way to go, and really, the whole thing is really to keep people from, you know, if they're on top and, you know, falling over. And that's really the whole primary purpose of it.
Yep, I understand that. There's also a massive price swing between.
That's, yeah, you are correct, yes.
So, that doesn't, I guess, what kind of timing are choices needed by? Like, I, I don't feel like two fencing options.
Um, I, I know the county, their designer, engineer on board wants some direction and what way they want to go and to keep the design going. The retaining wall is probably the most important as far as what the shoes so they can start designing. The railing is just something that gets tagged on the top. You know, if the council has different things they're looking for, I can, you know, ask if there's other options. I know we did talk at the board, we did talk kind of about the cost of it, because one of the things to look at, and I'll go back in my, the presentation here, if you look at the, here's the wall looking east, you know, and you're in your industrial park, you know, you can kind of see the slopes of the yard from the buildings, like, you know, and so if somebody were, like I said, walking, you know, that keeps them in. So, this is your, in our business park, is it, is it, is it important to have something really decorative there? One of the things, only people will take, maybe see it when you get towards the end.
You may see it as people driving, but are you going to look up in the air when it's 15 feet, when you get towards the railroad bridge, oh, look at that rail up there?
Or will somebody see it, like on the north side, for example, they're walking on a path, you may be more enhanced to look up, you know, while in particular to see, you know, the railing or fencing up there. Now, when you get to the other side, as you can see, some of these, when you're on east of the bridge, actually, on the south side, it actually borders a residential neighborhood. You know, and in the north side, it's going to be, property is going to be developed. It's a field right now, but we envision it's going to be some type of residential housing that'll be on the north side. So, should you, you know, have maybe a mix, what, maybe the railing should go there, especially if it's in your, in your backyard. I know there was discussion at the board. Either way, I mean, part of it was talking about, you know, you know, this is kind of a one-time thing. Do we spend the money now or not? I know we did talk about, you know, it was questioned, and the board can, that was there can jump in, to bring at least with this recommendation for to have the discussion at council, to kind of determine how they wanted to move forward with the railing part of it. One of the other things that was talked about a little bit briefly, in case questions were asked, and I didn't have it as part of the presentation, you know, do we consider, you know, a smooth wall, nothing on it, no, just a plain gray wall with the potential to maybe do some type of mural.
The county, we'd have to work something out. This is not something that was presented from the county to the city, but it was actually something internally staffed.
Talked about, you know, another idea to look at. So, if you go down a front street, you have a mural on a wall type of a thing, that's, you know, affronting that retaining wall. We didn't really go into a lot of detail on that, other than, you know, the county would have to actually, we'd have to come into some type of agreement if the county would allow a mural and a flat, smooth wall.
Thank you.
Dan.
Alder Person Carpenter.
Yeah, per our discussion at Board of Public Works, for the wall enforcement that was brought up and everything, and I asked Scott those same questions, and at the end of the day, this is the county's at the end, so I don't think they're going to give us products that aren't going to withhold, and if they don't hold up, I asked once again, it's the county's road, it's the county's stuff that they have to repair and pay for. So, that was some of the question discussions, why we decided on the wall. On the railing, I was big on that, I didn't like the fence, and I said you can go south, head more south, and you see that on overpasses and everything, and I think that fence just looks kind of shady, and that, this is going to be here for a long time.
I don't disagree with any of that.
You know, so, and I know it's a big difference in cost, but they didn't give us any other options.
Yeah.
So, if these are the only two options, that's the reason the board went the one way.
And one thing I do want to add, and we'll talk a little bit about when we talk about the bridge, one of the things that GV15 right now, they're looking at probably, the cost of that's probably $10 million more than what was originally estimated because of the cost of what we had to build for the retaining wall and build a new railroad bridge. So, when we discussed GV16, which is the bridge, the city, you know, has, you know, the county got a funding from the federal for $50 million, and the county's been working with the state on that, that any monies that are not used on the bridge part of it can be carried over to GV15, which may cover some of the costs that we're talking about here.
I think that was state money, Scott, $50 million for the bridge?
I'm, well, yeah, it was come from the state. But I mean, it's, yes.
So, would it be unreasonable to approve the portion that you think they need to approve now, the wall, and to go back to the county and ask some more questions about the railings, maybe other railing options, or even bringing up the mural idea with them and then bringing it back to the next meeting?
We, we can definitely do that if the council chooses. If you've got a preferred wall you'd like to go with, and the railing is the issue, you know, I guess we could, you know, what's the direction that we're looking at? Are you looking other than fencing, a more decorative type? I can definitely work with the county on that and, you know, and pass on the concerns from the council and what they're looking for on this project, on the railing part.
Okay. Alder Person Carpenter.
Well, I don't know how dealing with the county is on this, Scott, so we say we don't want the link fence, but maybe we want a different railings. Maybe all of a sudden, they come back and say, this is our only option, come back with a cheaper one that maybe we don't like, but this is the ones. I don't know how the dealing's going with the county, how any of this process is working. So, I mean, I just don't want to.
I think the cost of the railing, what they're estimating, is probably not going to be different when it presented, it's the style of the railing. You know, I mean, there's different styles, I mean, you saw the one they presented, but then you have the railings on I-41. I mean, if I get a feel from the council what you want, or if you just want different railings to be looked at and brought back, I mean, that's, I can do that, too. You know, Alder Person Carpenter is correct, I mean, ultimately, you know, the county's got to decide, it's their facility. They've kind of, you know, told me that they're willing to consider, since the city is sharing 50/50 on this project, just because of what they're recommending, and we'll see that in our bridge, some of the recommendations versus what the board is, is that they're definitely willing to consider, because they also got to take this back to their, you know, Board of Supervisors to vote on it, just like the council is here.
Right. You still have something to add?
I can just comment. The, the one point is, anything that you want to ask for, we can ask for it. So, if there's something that we're looking at that you'd like to see that's in between, that's a bit more decorative, but might be less costly than what they projected, we can ask, is there something available? Can we do something like that? I mean, you're correct, we're paying 50% just as the county is for those sections that go through the city. You will also pay 50% under the current standard for anything that gets maintained in the future. This isn't a county road in that context, it's a county road, but all the county roads, when they redo them, the city's on the hook for half that cost. At least, that's how their arrangement has been.
I don't, I don't believe that's correct. Once it's constructed, they, there's certain things, based off the agreement that the council entered into, once it's built, then the primary stuff, the road, the walls, the other things, they would maintain, some storm sewer, some other things.
They maintain, but they don't, if it gets reconstructed or redone, we're on the hook for 50%.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
We'll have to look into it, I mean, I, yeah, I, we'll have to look at that, further into that.
Alder Person Carpenter.
So, I guess if, you want to look at different, as long as you don't, they understand we don't want the chain link fence.
Right.
I just want to make sure that's.
Well, just a third option would be nice.
Yeah.
In the middle.
Yeah. It's just, I'm not in favor in that, that area to have that type of fence, because there's residential area there, and I don't think, and like I said, it's there for a long time, and so why are we going to, if we want to come up with a different type of fence, I'm more unwilling to look at that, but I just, I'm not for favor of chain link fence.
Alder Person Gantz.
With regard to the walls, again, can you explain which of the three is the most sturdy as the most longevity, it's going to last the longest?
They all, they all actually have their purpose. They're all designed in a different way to retain soil, the forces behind it. You know, like where you have the piling go down, for example, in my experience, it's the piling driven down, and then the piling holds the panels back to hold it. When you just build the earth wall, they basically, what you're building, as you build it, you'll have like, if you ever built a, say, a small retaining wall at home, you got fabric behind the wall, that actually, the soil sit on it to help, you know, there are reinforcements from the earth, that's the MSC. Now, the cast and place is set up on a foundation with the wall coming in, and is that, you know, structurally designed, so the concrete and steel plus the foundation holds the, actually, the dirt back. So, they all sort of have a purpose to hold it, their engineers calculate what needs to be done, it's just what the construction trends are with that, that piling type wall. This one right here is usually, you know, double cost versus the other walls.
Thank you. And can I ask another question?
Yeah.
The railing, kind of with what Amy was saying, is there a happy median? I mean, it looks like we have a high end and a low end, and I agree. It would be nice to see something else. I'm not a fan of the fence, the chain fence, but I do like the other one, but another option would be great, so I agree.
So, what I'm hearing from the council, for those that you are kind of talking about the railing, we don't want chain link, but we want some options for the railing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it should still be a metal railing, but to see if there's more cost-effective metal railings. Should I make an amendment on that, then?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. Did you make the motion?
I made the motion, yeah. So, we're still approving the board's recommendation, but then also going back to the county, just to see if there's a cheaper metal railing option for us to consider. More cost-effective.
A second. Do we also want to add in something about the stamped concrete and looking into doing a smooth concrete for the option of possibly doing murals there?
I would, yeah, I would like to explore that. I, I don't think it's, we're talking about smooth so that we have the option to do murals. I don't think it's necessary for the whole 2,000 feet, but, you know, if we can get some sections of it for color and, and just, just to get some, some art in there, I would really appreciate to see that.
So, do we have to?
You need a motion to amend the motion if they want to add that in.
You got that?
Yeah.
You want to make that motion?
I, I would make a motion to that effect, yes.
Okay. I can second it, right?
You can, or I will, whatever.
Okay, I'll second. To request, to request information on the smooth concrete options? Yes. Okay.
For mural purposes?
For mural purposes. Smooth concrete, okay. Since we're already going back to them, yeah. Alder Person Carpenter.
I assume it's open for more discussion now, correct?
Oh, yes, please.
Well, I'm just going to, you can put a smooth narrow, I'm not against murals or nothing, I think we're already going to get enough mural drawings in that area by the railroad tracks.
Unsolicited, what?
Hate to say that, I'm just saying, you're, you're asking for something, and you look at the railroad bridge itself, where it is, there's already art on it.
Sure. So, then we shouldn't put stamped concrete in there, it'd be harder to clean.
I don't know what you want, but I'm just going to say how it's.
I can.
You get in those, you get in those areas unless it's policed or watched or tons of traffic going through there, there's going to be, I hope it doesn't happen, that's how I will state that.
Noted. Any other discussion on the amendment to the, Alder Person Hansen?
I know the city administrator was interested in the murals, did you foresee, or were you thinking just this retaining wall or also the bridge itself?
Hmm, no, we had talked about it at the staff level, I discussed it with the mayor, the mayor also had an interest in potentially having one, two, three, four sections of the retaining wall potentially have smooth concrete for whatever width in different areas that you could have.
Oh, here we go.
They could have painted, I'm glad that you're excited there. Have a mural painted in those areas. At the staff level, we never discussed anything about murals on the bridge.
Okay.
It was only in this area, and only if that's something the council was interested in. The intent would be if you do it and the county agrees with you and you can work that out, my expectation would be that you would then have to solicit someone, come up with a plan of what do you want to do for murals, how big do you want them, where do you want them located, negotiate that with the county, you'd have to go through the process of funding it, and then you'd also have to do the maintenance for those murals, obviously, over time, the county's not going to do that. So, our discussion was really along the lines, if you want to do something unique with this wall, you got to do it now, because you're not going to be able to come back later and do those types of things, that, that's not going to work. So, if you want to do what was approved by Board of Public Works, that's perfectly fine. If you want to do something different, we'd have to go back to negotiate that with the county and see what they're willing to work with.
So, the motion is just to have conversations with the county about if it's feasible, or if they're willing to do it?
I believe so, yeah. That was John.
Yes, that would be my intention.
To request information on pricing and agreeability to the smooth concrete options.
Yes.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Now, do we have two, two amendments?
We have two amendments.
Yeah.
So, how do we?
What you're doing is you're making a motion to amend the motion as amended.
Okay.
Yep. We did not vote on.
On my first.
On the railing. Oh, you didn't, oh, I'm sorry. So, then, yeah, you need to vote on that first one first.
Yeah, so the first amendment is to go back to the county to see if they have more cost-effective metal fence or railing option.
Yes. Okay. We have a motion and a second for that amendment. And we don't need a roll call on that.
I don't think we got a second.
Alder Person Gantz, seconded.
Oh, she did, okay. Thanks.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on that? Then, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And then, we have the motion to amend.
The amended motion.
The amended motion to request information and viability with county on the smooth concrete options. Right. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, motion carries. And now we can vote.
And the whole motion.
The whole thing, assuming nobody has anything else to add. All right, and that'll be a roll call vote. Okay. Alder Person Gans?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Cundinger?
Aye.
Ludvina?
Aye.
Pirok?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Essercon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item ten? Ten, ten. Recommendation from the Board of Public Works on GV sixteen Bridge Design Concepts.
Bear with me just a second, pull up the PowerPoint and apologize.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Public Works' recommendation, at least for discussion.
Right. Did you second that, or, okay, motion by Alder Person Hanson, seconded by Alder Person Cundinger. Do you want to speak on this? Okay, Scott?
So now, we talked a little bit about the, the bridge itself. The board actually, actually was presented with various aesthetics look on a bridge. The PowerPoint in front of you is what we discussed last week. Basically, the county presented us the different options for the bridge. We'll go through those options and kind of discuss individually what those are, the costs associated with it, and then, you know, and then, like I said, there's a recommendation from the Board of Public Works on, on that, on these aesthetics, aesthetics, apologize. So the very first option presented, so we're talking below the bridge, below where the girders are. What you see before you is really, you know, the support structure coming out of the river. Basically, what you got is smooth concrete, you have the, kind of the foundation, it kind of sits on the river, kind of a, what you see there, you got basically rectangular columns, and then you got the, basically supporting the cross beams there. This is kind of the option the county is preferring. It's a no color, regular, kind of a concrete look. They actually, there's no form liners, no surface treatment. It's basically what you have is a plain concrete finish. Basically, what the county, their rationale for this recommended option is that, you know, they feel unlike the Claude Alway, there's not a lot of people are going to see underneath the bridge versus the top side, which we'll get to those details in a minute. So the next option is kind of was discussed about, you kind of now got, you've got that same type of rectangular look, except this time you got a cut stone surface texture stamped on a base. And what that is, I don't have anything to point to, but it's really what you see on the bottom of the river, supporting it. It basically is a cut stone, it's a form liner, and then, you know, we have, that'll be stained as well as the, the piers itself. This is the option, I believe, the board recommended. You know, they felt that, the board felt that we should have some type of aesthetic look underneath the, the bridge, and this was a kind of the recommendation from the board just before you. Now, when you go to this style, this option, just for the, the piers being built, it's basically going to cost you four hundred and fifty thousand dollars overall for the nine piers. One of the things the county did, again, kind of similar to retaining walls, it's a fifty-fifty share. So if the, you know, council had different options, you know, to add to the cost for aesthetics, they would definitely entertain it and move forward, and maybe, you know, like I said, it'd be a fifty-fifty split. The next thing is kind of the plain look. It's tough to see, our trapezoidal, you know, you know, piers that basically, again, go with the foundation sticking out of the water. This would be no form liner, plain concrete finish, just because of the shape of the columns, that's what adds to the cost. And this actually, for this aesthetic look, for the trapezoidal columns, it's nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars increased cost versus the, of the very, I should say, go back. This one here, the county recommends, everything, when I say additional, like this is four fifty, or this is nine hundred and ninety, it's over what the county's recommending for the base cost. Then we have, what we have, that same look now, but it's enhanced flared with trapezoid. This will be stained, and then you would actually have the cut stone surface texture. This option is one million four hundred and forty thousand dollars additional cost. And like I mentioned earlier, the recommendation before you from the Board of Public Works is this look with the enhancer rectangular columns, cut stone surface texture for the pier base, and then the concrete stain on the columns. So before I go any further on the other parts of the bridge, any questions on just the piers, column piers?
Alder Person Hanson?
Yeah, so at the board, I supported at least doing the staining for the aesthetic look. And then you mentioned, I think, at the board, Scott, the trapezoidal columns, they don't really provide any additional support, right? It's just purely this shape aesthetic.
Correct.
Yeah, so I, I just didn't feel that that was worth nine hundred some thousand, just for a slightly different shape.
And that's this one, right, that you have up, Scott?
This, this is actually the recommendation from the board. What Alder Person Hanson referring to is this kind of a trapezoidal look, which is one million four hundred and forty thousand, but the color and the stamp.
That's crazy. Any other discussion on this?
All right, moving on then. Now, what we got is what you see on top, it's called a bridge parapet and railing. Basically, what you see is what the county recommended, as well as our board, you have a kind of a form liner with the railing, kind of a stone look. I'll go real ahead, a quick, real quick here. That'd be the look on the inside of it, but basically, it's a form liner with the stone look, and then it would be stamped. That would actually, was what the recommendation of the board is. And then on top of that bridge parapet, you have a decorative railing, which is what the county recommends, as well as, you know, the Board of Public Works in front of you. The tubular railing, as you see in the bottom picture, that's plain Jane metal railing, no aesthetics, no nothing. That is really no cost. If you go with the actual decorative railing you see up on top, it's three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars additional cost. The other thing is on the parapet with the, the staining and the form liner with the stone look, that's additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost. And then on top of that, what the county's proposing, you have here, what we have pedestrian lookouts. They're proposing three on the north side, three on the south side of the, of the bridge. Their cost approximately ten thousand dollars each for a total cost of sixty thousand. The county's recommending this as well, as well as the Board of Public Works. Now, I didn't, we didn't really talk about the streetlight. Now, it's part of what the county presented. It's going to be black, you know, streetlights kind of matching the corridor leading into it. It'll be LED type lights, but the poles itself would be a black style pole. You know, what are, what do those look like? We have those on our industrial parks now, actually, even Drive GV. You know, what's built from County Highway X to the north, those are black style, or painted, streetlight pole. And then the other option kind of talked about are actually, bridge, Claude Alway has these bridge end pylons. They were really brought into discussion, you know, in case the city want to do something similar to that. I believe the board had no interest in that, because, I mean, you're looking at about two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar cost just to have some type of pylon. It wouldn't necessarily look like this, white or anything like that, but it'd be some type of pylon that's kind of seen here, be four of them, one at each corner of the bridge. So that's kind of what we did, kind of discussed at the Board of Public Works, with the recommendations in, in front of you.
Thanks, Scott. Any discussion, questions? Alder Person Hanson?
Yeah, so basically, the county's recommending the upgraded aesthetics for everything here on forward. I was kind of torn on the pylons. You know, it has kind of created a signature look for our current bridge, the Claude Alway Bridge. So I think you could make the argument to keep it consistent, keep that kind of extra flourish. But I think, Scott, you pointed out that really they serve no purpose. I mean, there's some lights on them, but it would purely be, you know, there just for looks, right?
Correct.
I'm certainly open to hearing what the other Alder Person's think.
The pylons?
The pylons, yeah.
I would agree with what the board determined, personally. Looks like everyone's in agreement there. I have a question. Why can't the railings match? Why, we would do chain, chain link at one point, and then the bridge would have something?
Are you talking railings match the retaining wall?
Right.
So they could, if that's a style, that's kind of a different style, because it's the short, the height of it, where the retaining wall might be a little bit more. There is a gap, if you go back to, I don't have it, but, so when you get to the retaining wall, kind of envision this, the retaining wall, as you go west to east, ends at Redtail Glen. Then you're coming up to Lost Dauphin Road, so there's no retaining wall. You're kind of at grade a little bit. You hit a roundabout, that's going to be at Lost Dauphin, in, you know, the Southbridge Corridor. And then you, it'd be that roundabout's kind of the entrance to the bridge. So then, from where the bridge starts, that's where the railing would start. So you, you're not, it's not a continuous with the rail. So you have a gap. But if you wanted that as an option, or you wanted the railing on the wall to look similar to the bridge, that can be definitely requested for the county to give you an option.
I like the bridge railing. Maybe there's something similar that would be an in-between price point for us. Okay, thanks. Anybody? Alder Person Hanson?
So Scott, I had brought up, it was in the packet at Public Works about, the county did offer to add the southern, southern, Southbridge Connector logo to the railings. Did you get any more information from them about that?
I reached out with that, but I had not received any information in time for this meeting.
So is that something we could revisit once we get information? Because I was also mentioning at the board, it might be nice to add the city's logo to the railing, too.
If.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think to do what you're talking about, if you want to do something decorative in some of the sections of the fencing, that's something that we could probably work out with them later.
One of the things on that logo that you're referring to, Alder Person Hanson, I know it was talk at the, for the I forty-one interchange, as you, as you're driving on forty-one going north and south, the intent would be having that on the railing of the bridge. So as you see that, you know, people passing through the lookup, there's a kind of a logo, you know, that's part of the railing. So what you're envisioning, you know, like, the city man, I could call him city minister, city manager, actually, you mentioned that type of thing would probably be incorporated potentially on the railing.
Okay. I'd like to go back to the pylons.
Pylon, yeah.
There's nothing structurally beneficial about upgrading. I just want that on.
No structural.
No struc- So with a project that we already know is going to have additional costs, why would we want to entertain really anything that aesthetically doesn't really change it all that much to cost us more? Like, I can see with railings and things like that, that maybe aesthetically you want, but the pylons are under the bridge.
Well, it's at the level.
Yeah, if I could, I think the pylons they were talking about that way are the ones that are, like, what you call the fins that the.
Okay, so what, yeah, the underneath.
The underneath, no, that's the piers.
The piers, okay, so the piers, we're recommending something that costs X, the one step up, if you will.
Coating to it.
Right?
Yeah.
Coating was added on to.
Just a coating, yeah, for, that would then have to be re-administered every, what, five, ten years?
Well, I can't tell you a maintenance plan of the, the staining or the coating we have on a Claude Alway, what's that been, almost twenty years now? It's in need, will be, the council will have to do some type of rehab to that in your future. It'd be no different if we stain something like this, there'd be rehab, you know, maintenance cost ongoing. I mean, it's not every five years, you're probably getting ten, fifteen for sure, not twenty.
Probably twenty years. Probably every twenty years or so.
Yeah.
Another cost.
And then, you know, kind of just to reiterate, I mentioned a little bit, there's a fifty million dollar grant from the state on this bridge. Originally, it was thought everything had to be built on GV sixteen. Working through with the consultant and the DOT, because the DOT is administering, because of the funding, is they've actually got it in writing, I believe, is that any excess after they bid the project that's left over can go over and be used for GV fifteen. And so we've talked about aesthetics, and we, we talked about this at the Board of Public Works, any cost savings. So if we add four hundred and fifty thousand, well, that's four hundred and fifty thousand left that could be carried over GV fifteen. Now, you got, one of the things to keep in mind, this is your one and only crack at. I mean, you're not going to, if you want to change your mind on aesthetics, you're not going to get that.
Yep.
For a hundred years. You know, so I mean, is that worth the four hundred and fifty thousand and any aesthetics you have before you? And that's something the council has to, has to determine.
Alder Person Gans?
The coating to redo it, you said every twenty years, what would the cost be for that, do you think?
Could you repeat that?
Sure. On the coating, if you have to redo that in twenty years, what would the cost be, do you think?
I'm not even going to begin to answer, I have no idea.
Thank you.
Can you, sorry, can you go back to the one the county's recommending?
The very first one.
Okay. Thanks.
So what you would see here, if you look at this next one, so you have it stained with the form liner showing the stone, and then there's unstained, pure concrete look. Now, what you envision, see that concrete, you know, base that's there in the, in the river? You know, that's going to, as the water goes up and down in the river, you know, that's going to kind of fluctuate a little bit what's exposed.
Uh, Larry?
The one thing to keep in mind, when you look at the gray, for example, what they're showing, typically today, you don't see that type of structure being built in urban settings. You see it on interstates, you see it out on county roads, those types of things. You don't see it in urban settings. So it kind of depends on how you look at this. It is in urban setting that the river is developed full length down. You're going to be, obviously, having twenty, thirty thousand cars a day going across this, all the boat traffic. This is essentially, as I like to call it, Lake DePere, down through that section where everybody does their water skiing and tubing and everything else through that area pretty consistently. So, I mean, if you wanted to maintain more of an urban feel, you probably would want to stain it now, because going back later is going to be much more expensive. And I don't think the staining really keeps it from being less dirty, it just looks a little different as it ages. But if you want it to be more of an urban feel, I'd recommend doing it now, and not waiting and then coming back later to do it.
Couldn't, regardless, you have to do it bigger. Could we look at doing the stain? Like, the, the enhanced one that the Board of Public Works recommended, but without the stone on the bottom? You spoke to, the stone possibly being a.
That, that's what makes, that's what makes it.
Oh, go ahead.
That, that's what makes it, and it's all getting stained, it's all on the same price. I don't know how much difference you're going to get on a price, maybe you'll save money, but I really don't. It's all in the design. I mean, like Larry stated, DePere River, I mean, the, if nobody took the boat, their boats down the river, I'm not, this isn't going over, some would say you're going overboard, but if you don't use the recreation of the water, then it means nothing to you. If other people use the recreation, they'll see it and say, boy, that looks nice, or maybe, whatever. Does it add anything to the bridge? No, structurally, nothing. This is just an appearance, just like your fencing and railings and everything else.
I'm not opposed to it, I just, there's talk of the water levels rising and falling, and the stone getting very dirty. Go ahead, Larry.
All right. So I may have to correct myself now, after I've been sitting here thinking about it. Because I, we did talk about the staff level, about the water level going up and down. We've had the experience, obvious, with the Claude Alway, and all the bridges going down. Now that I think about it, I think they control the water level on that section, so it really doesn't go up and down much, does it?
Not as much, correct.
Because they'll adjust the boards and everything down here on the water flow to keep that section of the river pretty steady, if I think about it. All the other areas below the dam are not that way. They get impacted significantly, as much as four to six feet, different than height. So maybe this would be fine.
Scott?
And the other thing to.
And the other thing to point out, the aesthetics, you know, those that live along the river are going to see it the most. You know, the other thing is, you may see it more as it develops on the east side, but definitely when you come up Lost Doffin, you know, basically going from the salt coming north, you'll see probably a good portion of it. As you come from the north going south, you may not see it. But the residents that do live there, and I believe, you know, there was a news interview by NBC 26 tonight with the one of the residents living on the river and, you know, wanted to make sure, you know, I believe they got what was presented to the board and kind of, you know, voiced their concern. They would want to see something more appealing versus just plain Jane. And that just based off what I heard tonight.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, this is a little off topic, but as Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, I also just want to mention this bridge will be named after Arthur Altmeier, who is considered the architect of social security. He helped get that program created during Franklin D Roosevelt's administration. I would like us to have some kind of a plaque on the bridge explaining the historic significance of Arthur Altmeier. So plenty of time to figure that out, but I just wanted to state that for the record, that I hope that we will be able to install something to that effect as we go forward.
And one thing, I believe the naming of it, of the bridge that's going to be ultimately up to the county. I know we did pass on the, some of the suggestions to the county, but they, I don't know at this point where, how they are going to name it and what they're, who they're going to name it after.
I thought it was already a done deal, but.
It's a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, so, I didn't know that. We have a motion in a second.
We do.
Is that to approve what the Board of Public Works asked forward, which was this design, correct? And then everything else, we seem to be in line with the county's recommendations.
And if you want me to go real quick for those maybe watching, what you see on the screen is for the rectangular piers, the recommendation staining it and with the form liner for the stone. Then you're looking at the railing on top, you know, the decorative style railing on top, as well as the form liner stone on the outside of the parapet, as well as the inside as you see, along with the six bump outs, pedestrian bump outs, three on each side of the bridge.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Carrie? Alderperson Hanson?
Aye.
Conninger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item 11, recommendation from the Board of Public Works on approval of Neighborhood Watch sign policy.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Carpenter?
P Rock.
P Rock, seconded by Alderperson Hanson. Any discussion? Alderperson Hanson?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Police Department for all their work on this. We started having conversations about this about a year and a half ago. As you can see on the map, there is a large number of signs, usually kind of old and dilapidated, that do need to be replaced or that are located where there's no longer an active neighborhood association. So I really appreciate all the work that the Police Department's done to try to clean this up. We have a new sign design that our Communications Director, Andy, came up with that looks really nice. That was submitted to the DOT for approval. And I think it'd be good to only have signs where there is an active neighborhood association. I think having them where they're inactive kind of undercuts the effectiveness of all the signs, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 12, Resolution 25-1, the first one of the year, authorizing second amendment to agreement for consulting services with Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated for the MSC expansion for design and construction engineering services.
I think a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Right, motion by Alderperson Carpenter, seconded by Alderperson Gantz, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Alderperson Conninger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 13, Resolution 2502, approving contracts with Wisconsin Public Service Corporation for outdoor lighting service, decorative lighting in the downtown areas.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Right, motion by Alderperson Hanson, seconded by Alderperson Gantz, is there any discussion? All those in, nope, roll call vote, please. Alderperson Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Conninger?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 14, Resolution 2503, authorizing participation in cost share grant with Brown County for US Department of Transportation, safe streets and roads for all program.
I think a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Carpenter, seconded by Alderperson Gantz, any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Alderperson P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Conninger? Ledvina?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 15, Resolution 2504, approving state municipal financial agreement with WISDOT for I-41 South Bridge Road interchange.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Quigley, seconded by Alderperson Gantz, any discussion? If not, roll call vote. Alderperson Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Conninger? Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 16, Resolution 2505, approving revision number one to the state municipal financial agreement for State Highway 32 from Cook Street to Merrill Street.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Hanson, seconded by Alderperson Gantz, discussion? Alderperson Hanson?
I just want to thank DOT for agreeing to include sidewalk on the east side of South Broadway from Boomer Street to Cook Street. I know I have had some constituents who have asked for that for years and I'm really glad that they were able to add that into this project. They're also going to add curb and gutter, so really kind of urbanizing that section, which I think will be very beneficial for that neighborhood.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, if not, a roll call vote, please. No? Yep. Alderperson Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Conninger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 17, Resolution 256, approving grant agreement for the Wisconsin Department of Health. I'm trying to decide what this stands for, LPHD Consolidated Contract Number 65397.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Gantz, seconded by Alderperson P Rock, any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, Resolution 2507, approving memorandum of agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by me, seconded by Alderperson P Rock, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 19, Resolution 2508, regarding DePere Parks Recreation and Forestry Park and Facilities Rentals, Recreation Programs, Aquatics and Community Center 2025 Fees.
I'll move to. I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Conninger, seconded by Alderperson Gantz, any discussion on fees? Alderperson Hanson?
Just want to note quick, the spring slash fall tree planting, 155.09 including tax. I do have a proposal that's going to be going to the Park Board that the Board of Public Works recommended moving forward with, which would have the city cover the cost beyond $100. So it would just be a flat $100 fee, but that would not go into effect until the 2026 budget, if it were to be included, so.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson Gans?
Can I ask Marty a question? Has anything changed significantly or you wish to speak about anything pertaining to the fees?
The only thing that changed significantly, if you will, is there was a request from the mayor to increase some of our non-resident fees.
I think we spoke about that last year, so, okay, thank you.
Anything else for Marty while he's up there? Your time to shine. All right, there's no further discussion. This is a roll call vote. Alderperson Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Here.
Hanson?
Aye.
Conninger? Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Item 20, Resolution 2509, Resolution authorizing representatives to declare official intent for reimbursement for federal tax law purposes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Carpenter, seconded by Alderperson P Rock, any discussion? All right, if not, a roll call vote? Alderperson Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Conninger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 21, Resolution 2510, approving utility easement for underground electrical services to Wisconsin Public Service, Parcel ED-275, 335 South Broadway Street.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Alderperson P Rock, seconded by Alderperson Carpenter, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 22, Resolution 2511, authorizing purchase of Placer Labs Inc. online venue analytics platform.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Carpenter, seconded by Alderperson P Rock, is there any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please. Alderperson Hanson?
Aye.
Conninger? Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 23, Resolution 2512, authorizing agreement for consulting services with Myron Construction Company, Inc. for a public parking garage.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson P Rock, seconded by Alderperson Gantz, any discussion? Alderperson Carpenter?
Yes, this is, as I was reading through this, Myron could actually be the general then to this, or not? Is it, I mean, I'm just curious if they can.
I just don't want to interject.
He said he could jump on if we needed him to, but I don't believe he's, I don't know.
Okay, all right, so yes, they could be.
I just was wondering, as, you know, I mean, as a person in on it, they can also be. All right, thank you. I did read through it and everything and it did look like they can't have, that they can't reap pricing and everything. I kind of read through everything, but just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Alderperson Hanson?
Will the aesthetic design much further down the road come back to the council?
I believe it will. I know there's been some concern about what goes to Plan Commission, what goes to council for some of the members. This is a unique city project, so I'll just have to say this today one time here. I won't be here to manage that for you, but, yes. I would anticipate they'll end up bringing it back and working through it with the council. Because again, it's your project. This isn't where you're approving someone else's project, so this is your project. So I would anticipate that'll come back to council for final approval.
Okay, I'll put our hands. Any, anything else, any other questions or discussion? If not, roll call vote? Alderperson Conninger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 24, Resolution 2513, creating senior mechanic position and assigning position to city's table of organization and compensation plan. I'll second. So that was a motion by Alderperson Conninger, seconded by me. Any discussion? Roll call vote? Alderperson Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Conninger? Thank you, motion carries. Future agenda items? Does anybody have anything?
I have two, actually.
Oh! Only one, one and then we'll.
Yep. First one is, I'm wondering if we can look into creating a program that would offer financial incentives for development projects in the downtown to encourage the use of more masonry in the material for the buildings and less, you know, metal siding. You know, developers have indicated they would like to use more brick and stone, but the costs are just too high and that's why they are relying so much more on metal siding. So, you know, this program would help offset that cost. And this would be for future projects.